We'll now call the common council meeting of June 7th, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Dukenya.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Alderman Gale is excused. Alderman Guzikowski.
Here. Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Carrie, would you start us out?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll get us to the approval of minutes of May 17th, 2022. Everybody, please take a moment to look at it. And when you are satisfied, there are no errors, omissions, corrections, or discussions. Motion.
Marshall moves to approve the minutes of May 17th, 2022.
Zikowski, outside. Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenya.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye. And item four under recognition is a mayoral proclamation recognizing Pride Month being June 2020. Catherine, if you could read that in the record, please.
Certainly. Mayoral proclamation, June 2022 LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall uprising, which occurred in June of 1969 and is generally recognized as a catalyst of the LGBTQ rights movement. And whereas the city of Oak Creek cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas the city of Oak Creek accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas the city of Oak Creek strives to be a community where everyone is celebrated for our differences rather than being limited by what divides us. And whereas the city of Oak Creek denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas the city of Oak Creek appreciates the culture, civic, and economic contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus LGBTQ community, which strengthen our social welfare. And whereas it is imperative that people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas despite being marginalized, LGBTQ people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this day, Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, that I, Daniel J. Bekovich, mayor of the city of Oak Creek, declare the month of June 2022 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Oak Creek and invite residents to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists, respect the rights of all people, and celebrate the great diversity of our city, dated the 7th day of June 2022.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're up.
Alderman, Alderman, any comments? Nothing? Again, I do believe it's very important that we recognize our diversity here within the city, and this is a great opportunity to do so with this population. Two things that really stands out to me, and I think this is a good statement for Oak Creek. City of Oak Creek accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. That is no truer statement that could be done, not just here in Oak Creek, but everywhere. And Oak Creek is striving to be a community where everybody is celebrated for the differences rather than being limited by what divides us. I think those are really powerful statements. And again, we just want to recognize and celebrate Pride Month here in Oak Creek, June of 2022. So we need no action on that as that is a mayoral proclamation. So we will move on to item five, which is a public hearing. And that is to consider a request by West Park LLC to amend the conditions and restrictions and general development plan regarding the M1 manufacturing plan unit development for the Oakview Business Park as it relates to the property at 200 West Oakview Parkway. Catherine, would you read that in, please?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by West Park LLC to amend the conditions and restrictions and general development plan regulating the M1 manufacturing planned unit development for the Oakview Business Park as it relates to the property at 200 West Oakview Parkway. The applicant is West Park LLC, property owner, West Park LLC. Legal description there follows, and the date of notice is May 11th, 2022.
Thank you, Catherine. With us time, Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we are here to discuss a brief PUD amendment to the Oakview Business Park specifically as it relates to 200 West Oakview Parkway. And for those of you who are not quite as familiar with Oakview Business Park, this is one of the parcels that is on the corner of Oakview Parkway and Howell Avenue. Stella and Chews is right across from this particular parcel, and there are, there's one property that is currently under construction and an existing multi-tenant industrial building that is kitty-cornered to this as well. In the general development plan, as it was amended most recently in 2014, and also in the original GDP, the general development plan when the PUD was first approved, it showed this lot as two different parcels, a woodland parcel of six acres, and also it showed the wetlands and the woodlands to be preserved. So CSM 9131 created Lot 20 following the PUD revision in 2014, and that encompassed 8.2 acres. Wetlands were shown, but woodlands were not. So this is the existing general development plan in the planned unit development, and the parcel that we are discussing is the one that is in the McRedhatch area. So there was a discussion about the potential development of this property, and staff and the landowner and the potential developer of the property have had many discussions regarding this. And the question is, to what extent should we, is the parcel subject to the old code versus the new code? The conditions and restrictions for the PUD speak to parking lot landscaping, but not necessarily tree preservation specifically. And under the current code, we do have a tree preservation ordinance, so there's a little bit of a disconnect there. This is the CSM that created Lot 3. Again, it was originally shown to be two lots. It is now one. The wetlands are shown, and if you can see that, that's in the kind of, in the southwest area and in the northeast portion of the property. In the proposed general development plan submitted by West Park, this would still be a lot that would be open for development. The requirements for wetlands in terms of fill or impact would still have to be permitted by the DNR and possibly the Army Corps of Engineers and the developer, and West Park are both aware of this. So in the prior code, the requirement for woodland preservation basically said woodland shall, to the greatest extent possible, greatest practical extent possible, be protected with an overall development plan for the property. In order to make this determination, the owner or developer of any property or properties that are involved with any of the following shall have any woodland on the property, as shown in the most recent Sewer PAC or USDA aerial photo of the city state inventoryed and legally described. And also part of this property is in what is identified by Sewer PAC as an isolated natural resource area. Now that doesn't actually prohibit any development of the property in and of itself. Basically, what it says is Sewer PAC has identified this area as being somewhat of a, of an area to be looked upon with a little bit of a scrutiny in terms of habitat. But there's no regulatory mechanism for them to protect that particular area. Sewer PAC doesn't have regulatory authority. It's more of an informational piece than anything else. However, again, the wetlands would be regulated by DNR, possibly the Corps. So we do recognize that 48, over 48 acres of woodlands, wetlands, and open space have been preserved as part of Oakview Business Park, and staff have worked with West Park very well to ensure that those areas have been protected. And this is in addition to the eight acres of Murdian Park that were dedicated to the city prior to the development of the park. And Oakview Parkway actually provides that public street access to Murdian Park that wasn't there before. So the modifications to the isolated natural area, including the woodlands on this Lot 20, while identified and, you know, sort of unfortunate in terms of development, they do serve to implement the broader vision of the Business Park and TID number eight. It's also supported by staff. And we have had conversations again with regard to what would be required on this property in terms of, you know, wetland impacts, woodland preservation. And what we would like to request is that we still maintain the ability to work with the developer, with West Park, to identify high priority woods that would remain. We do recognize that if the woodland designation were removed from the general development plan and the council were to determine that the current code in terms of the tree preservation ordinance and inventory were not going to be required, that we would be under the old code, that we would still want to maintain some ability to have that conversation about what woodlands would be preserved. And in fact, we have a tree inventory for the entire parcel. They have identified, in accordance with the current code requirements, those trees that would be included in the protection and those trees that could be removed either by caliper or by the fact that they are either diseased or downed or dying. And on the screen right now is a proposed preliminary plan showing you what the development of the property could be. This would be going before the Plan Commission, should the Plan Commission, should the common council determine that the PUD could be amended to allow for this to move forward. We will see that there are some trees that are on here that would be impacted by the development, but we would be able to work around some of those areas in terms of finding either where we could relocate or if we could preserve some of those trees. We'd like to allow for the continuity and consistency of landscaping in the Business Park per the previous standards while discussing off-site options for accommodation of those tree replacement standards. But when the Plan Commission took a look at this and reviewed it, I think that they were also aware that our current requirements would require almost 300 trees to be identified off-site for replacement to meet the code requirements. So in terms of a compromise, which we are not talking about a specific number of trees to be preserved or replanted or relocated, but the Plan Commission has given these recommended conditions as part of their approval. It is the responsibility of the property owner to secure any permits through DNR or Corps. For impacts to the on-site wetlands or isolated natural resource areas prior to the commencement of any site disturbing activities in those areas, and any changes for grading and stormwater, et cetera, would still have to go before the engineering department for that approval prior to any development approvals and permits specifically. So it is with that that we provide the suggestive motion for approval of ordinance number 3044. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And as this is a public hearing, I will be making three calls. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium, give your name and address, and this will be the first call. Second call, anybody wishing to speak? Item five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. Debbie Tomcheck, 1000 North Water Street. I'm here on behalf of West Park. As usual, Carrie did a terrific job of explaining everything, we're in agreement with the Plan Commission's recommendation, and this really implements the intent of the original Oakview, which has been a great partnership between West Park and the city, and you're all to be commended for what's been accomplished there. And it makes Lot 20 ready for development, so happy to answer any questions, but really appreciate all the work that Carrie and her staff have done and the partnership we've had with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak? We will now close the public hearing and go on to item six, which is consideration of the ordinance amending the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2708 for planned unit development for the Oakview Business Park. I will turn it over. Council members, Steve.
Alderman Kirkowski, First District, up. I just noticed how long the information or extensive the information was on the council report. Normally, they're not that long, and, but I appreciate the explanation by Carrie tonight and how it was described in the report, and the fact that the Plan Commission minutes were also included, which was, was nice to, nice to have, to help with the, and I think I would, I would agree with the recommendations of the Plan Commission with regards to this matter.
Great, thank you, Steve. Anyone else? No? Again, I think Carrie summed it up really well. We always look for partnerships. We don't want to start at no and kill it there. We also, you know, want to keep our promise to the green canopy we have here in Oak Creek, and this is actually a strategic plan that actually enhances it and better plans out what's there. So this is actually a chance to improve what we have, believe it or not, as well as satisfy development along the way. So. There's no further discussion? Motion, please.
Kirkowski make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3044, amending the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2708 for the planned unit development for the Oakview Business Park. Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenya.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
That will get us to new business, and item seven is consideration of an ordinance fixing the salary and wage ranges, salaries, wages, and allowances for certain full and part-time labor association of Wisconsin and non-represented positions for the year 2022. Andrew?
Yeah, I'll quickly turn it over to Max. Thank you, Mayor. I gave a whole spiel on these things that were coming on the pike at the last meeting. I think I spoke for probably seven minutes, which was probably three minutes too long, so I won't go through that again. I'll just make you, remind you of that, that strategy, really. This is a strategic, strategic effort on the part of the staff to really look at some of the positions in the city at this present state of affairs and adjust where we see really just inequity in the marketplace. So with that, Max, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, City Administrator Vickers. Max Gagian, Assistant City Administrator and Comptroller. So before you tonight are two compensation analysis that we looked at. So first was our custodial positions. So when we looked at comparable municipalities in Milwaukee County, what you'll see is the average hourly rate is about $17.38 up to a maximum wage rate of about $23.27. And the table below, you'll see where our staff's currently at, the minimum rate at about $12.71 to a maximum of 18.50. So you can see on the minimum side, we're about 27% below market, on the maximum side, about 20%. So significantly out of uncompetitive work where that market's at. So what we're proposing is an increase to that minimum rate to $16.29, and then you can see the mid and max, so on and so forth. You'll notice we are still a little bit below where the market's at, we're within a 5% margin, but, you know, given the number of employee groups and positions we need to look at at the organization, you know, we need to be very strategic with how we go about the analysis as well as the implementation. And for the common council's awareness, even for the full-time staff, the average increase is about 12%, so about $4,500. And then for the part-time staff, it's about 24% or $4,700. So although we're not recommending we can get all the way to the market rate yet, it's still an appreciable increase for those staff and what they do for us in the city of Oak Creek. And our goal is ultimately to get to a rate on the part-timers of $16.70, which is the minimum of the market rate that West Bend had as part of their class and compensation study. So you'll see for the unbudgeted cost for 2022 is about $20,000. We do have long-term vacancy that we could absorb that cost for this year. And then for the 23 budget, it's about $42,000, $43,000. About $5,400 of that is a cost of living adjustment that we've already factored into our long-range projections, so really looking at overcoming about $37,600. And then the second analysis and adjustment we're requesting is for zoning administrator and planner position. This position recently became vacant, and as our positions become vacant, we want to take a look and see how they stack up in the market. So we did look at planning type positions at municipalities within Milwaukee County as well as the West Bend Class and Comp Study that we've referenced in our previous analyses. And you'll see that the minimum rate for the zoning administrator and planner in Oak Creek is about 15% higher than where the market's at. The mid and the, and the max rate are pretty comparable, but, you know, what you'll see is that between the minimum rate and the maximum rate, there's only about a, looks about 15% spread, and ideally, we want to get about 30%, really give the hiring manager that flexibility should they find a candidate. You know, maybe not the level of experience, but, you know, closer to kind of where the comps are at. So what we're proposing is to have that minimum rate brought down just under $30 an hour, and you'll see that's still about 4% above market. So I think we'll still be competitive, but it also gives us some enhanced flexibility as management on both the hiring side as well as additional increases as we see fit. And then lastly, just looking at how does this all layer into our 2023 budget? So you'll see the projected allowable increase is about $1 million, think about $700,000, $750,000 from that new construction, and then we had some leftover budget capacity from last year. The top four items you see, saw at the previous council meeting, those are what we're anticipating for our cost of living adjustment plus the previously approved market adjustments. So you'll see some additions with the custodians and their market adjustment, and then we do anticipate some savings with the zoning administrator and planning filling that position. So that would leave about $277,000, $278,000 in allowable increase for next year's budget to work towards other compensation adjustments. And with that, Personnel and Finance Committee recommended the common council approve ordinance number 3045, fixing the salaries and wage ranges, salaries, wages, and allowances of certain full-time and part-time labor association Wisconsin and non-represented positions for the year 2022. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the common council may have.
Thank you, Max. Rich?
Alderman Dukenya, Third District. I know when, when we saw those numbers at the committee meeting, I mean, we were quite surprised at how low we were in the marketplace. And I know we had discussions, so Andrew, you may know this as well, are we short-staffed in the custodial ranks currently, or is this, this increase geared to make it easier if, if there, you know, some labor shortages occur in that department?
Well, that always depends on who you ask, right? So if we're short on, on labor or not, but is there six or seven slots?
So we have two full-time custodians and six part-timers, and since my tenure, they have not been fully staffed.
As in my, so my six years here, we have not had a full complement that I remember, maybe early on, but that I remember. We've had two or three vacancies consistently through, and it's been a struggle to hire at these, these wages.
Obviously, the new normal is increased wages and competitiveness in the marketplace, and I think that's why as a committee, we had no problems with signing off on the increases, especially for, for this department.
And we'll keep giving you this tally because, again, you know, by the end of this, we're going to have a pretty short budget workshop next year. I think we kind of know what we're signed up for, and that was part of the seven-minute spiel last, last meeting, but we'll keep giving you the running total. There is another large investment being made. We're taking the DPW staff to the Personnel and Finance Committee next week, so we'll keep, keep you up to date on where we're, kind of our running total on this, on these investments. But, you know, whether we, we wait now or have this discussion at the budget and bring it all forward at one time, our human capital is going to be our priority for, at least from the staff's perspective, for our budget strategy in 2023. So we're kind of just getting a jump on that discussion.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Back?
I know we spoke about this at the last meeting, and it's my understanding that we're going to be seeing more of these in the future. And I, I don't quite remember from the last meeting, the three, the three areas that were adjusted. Of those three, were any of them not brought up to at least the average for the market? Do you remember?
I'm trying to recall, and I think most of them, we got just two about the market, maybe a percentage or two over, but what we'll see too, and we're still working through the Department of Public Works, but it would be challenging to get to mark, fully to market there, and that's where we really need to stress that, you know, there's actions we need to take as an organization immediately, you know, to really retain the folks we have as well as recruit for those vacant positions. But, you know, we really need to come back and do a comprehensive classification and compensation study. And, you know, just because we're taking steps now doesn't mean it's going to prevent things or, or these people won't be looked at, say, in a year from now.
Okay. And I, the reason I asked is because I thought I remembered the three previous ones were brought up to at least the market average. And then I see on this one, the custodian positions are unfortunately not able to be brought up to the market average. And as everyone said, the positions have never been fully staffed, so I'd, I'd hate to see the majority or even all the other positions be brought up to at least the market average and not the custodians. So if it's going to kind of go that way for potentially DPW and other departments, I mean, that's, that's the way it is. I just don't want them to be the ones that are left behind, so.
Yeah, and that's a, it's a fair comment, and, you know, quite frankly, we struggle with that internally in, in trying to rationalize it, but, you know, when we look at, you know, we have close to 190 non-represented positions. So, you know, we're trying to make sizable chunks and do the best we can, but we recognize, you know, we need a more comprehensive approach long-term.
Thank you.
You got something? No, I'm all set. Okay. Lisa? Steve?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Just a brief comment from me. I'm glad to see this. In Oak Creek, we pride ourselves on what we invest in, whether it's our buildings, our roads, our streets. Our biggest asset are our employees. That's what gets everything done, day to day. That's, that's taking care of your streets, your parks. That's what makes you proud, and that's your first impression coming into the city. And, and again, you know, we get up here, we get to be in the parades and everything, but all the hard work and all the good stuff really happens behind the closed doors with our staff, and whether it's DPW, Protective Services, right down to our custodians, anybody that walks in this building is always proud of this building. And again, we, we pride ourselves on that, so I don't look at this as a cost, I look at it as an investment, and that's in the future of Oak Creek. As we're investing in these buildings, we need to take care of them, we need to do it with the right people, so I'm glad to see this is going forward. Okay. No further discussion? Motion, please.
Yack move to approve ordinance number 3045, fixing the salary and wage ranges, salaries, wages, and allowances of certain full-time and part-time labor association of Wisconsin and non-represented positions for the year 2022.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Marshall.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenya.
Aye.
And moving on to Public Works and Utility, item number eight, it's consideration of a resolution approving a hold harmless agreement with Oakview 2 Industrial LLC located at 10551 South Oakview Parkway. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt Sullivan, City Engineer, taking this for Water and Sewer Utility. So this is a hold harmless agreement set before you. The improvements that are planned for this lot include an expansive warehousing speculation type style building with parking in the rear. In order to maximize their parking, they had to encroach in on a sanitary sewer easement, including retaining walls. So this hard, hold harmless agreement, what it does is it covers the requirements and the financial requirements if that retaining wall had to be removed to work on the sanitary sewer. If you guys have any questions, be more than happy to answer any of those.
Questions from Matt? Again, rather simple but protects us going forward in the future. Second. Okay. Seeing no discussion, motion on eight, please.
Kirkowski make a motion to adopt resolution number 12333-060722, approving a hold harmless agreement with Oakview 2. agreement with Oakview Two Industrial LLC, AW Wisconsin LLC at 10551 South Oakview Parkway.
Oracle Second. Call.
Alderman Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Duknia?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, and moving on to community development, it's consideration of a motion to approve the construction of a sand volleyball court at the Willow Heights Park at a cost not to exceed $28,000. So. Carrie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my understanding that at the previous council meeting that this was discussed, there were some additional questions that the council had before making a decision on this particular request. That information has been provided in this report. So there was a question regarding the heights of the existing volleyball nets at some of the other parks in the city. And those have been provided. It looks like there's at least two or three, perhaps a couple more that are at the women's net height already. There are a few that are at the coed height, and then the rest are at the men's height. So that was some of the information that was requested by council. Some of the other information that was provided by DPW, DPW Director Travatowsky, that's also included in the in the report for your information. So some of the things that are concerning are regarding damage to the paths, repairs for those damages, removing mature trees, and then replacing them with smaller ones, proximity to the basketball court, and the potential for sand to kind of migrate out of where it should be. The fact that it's going to be close to the pathway within 10 feet, additional maintenance that would need to be done, and herbicide treatments that would be required on an ongoing basis. One of the other pieces of information that's included in the report is from Leisure Services Assistant Paula Navarez regarding information for reservations. And it looks like the court at Meadowview was reserved a total of four times and the Oakleaf Court once. And there have been no reservation requests for courts other than Meadowview and Oakleaf. So that has been provided. So a little bit more information regarding the use of our existing facilities. And there is still a recommendation for council consideration to approve the construction of the sand volleyball court at Willow Heights Park at a cost not to exceed $28,000. Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Carrie. There are some residents that came in and requested to speak. So before I go to the council, I will invite them up. Nicole, you are first. So if you would, please name an address.
Hi, my name is Nicole Turley, and my address is 936 West Glen Crossing here in Oak Creek. And I've lived on the Willow Heights Park almost 18 years. I love the park. It's beautiful. In the last five years, I've also been a youth volleyball coach. And I know that the reservations may have only shown four reservations for some of the courts. But we are the ones that we use those courts, and we show up, and they're being used, and they're busy. I would wonder how many times a reservation is in for a basketball court that's at our park too, and that's used every day, all day. I see people outside playing all the time. And our high school volleyball team is having a sand league at the Meadowview Court this summer, all summer, every Tuesday night. I've invited some of our youth volleyball coaches, and some of our neighbors have come to show support. The youth volleyball coaches are thinking of having a youth sand league also. And it's a very popular sport. And it is hard to get a group of people together sometimes based on where some of these other courts are in the city. Our our park at Willow Heights is fantastic. It's centrally located. We have had a second phase in our subdivision developed. It's very young neighborhood. There's paths. Kids could ride their bikes to our park to play volleyball. We kind of have the thought of if you build it, they will come. It will be used by our neighbors, by our community, and by our youth. Volleyball, as you may know, UW Madison, the women's volleyball team, won the national championship this year. And our Oak Creek High School girls volleyball team went to state for the first time since 1994. And it really has sparked quite an interest in women and girls in volleyball. And I'd love to help that passion and help play volleyball with my neighbors and their friends and their kids. And please, please approve this project. This has been going on for about two years that we made the request. And it's they've gone through the studies, they've unanimously approved the construction or bringing the park proposal to this committee. And I just, I would love it. I live there. My neighbors are here to support me. And I really appreciate your time listening.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Next, we have Amy. Welcome, Amy. Name and address, please.
Amy Iverson, 10010 South Jennifer Lane. So I am one of the volleyball coaches that Nicole spoke of. I'm here with my husband, who's also a co-coach with me. We have been coaching in Oak Creek for about five years, trying to raise the level of volleyball skills within our community. And we've done this primarily through use of the schools. But beach volleyball offers a different set of skills that really improves the girls' overall volleyball skill set. So that's really a reason to to build sand courts, is that it's a different game, it's a different sport, but it elevates volleyball overall. And then as Nikki spoke of, if you're looking for ROI, I want to give you two examples, which is number one, the girls did go to state this year. And that was as a result of the girls playing sand volleyball. And I could give you names and and addresses of girls that played at the sand court at Meadowview, and the sport is growing. Second, the West team, so which is right across from Willow Heights, their team finished first in their conference and also was going to win the tournament, but a little short to Mesquite. We won't make any more comments about that. But also doing very well because of the growth of the sport. And again, sand volleyball offers a different variation to continue to improve their skills in volleyball. Thank you.
Amy. Scott Iverson.
Oh, thank you. My name's Scott Iverson. My wife and I began coaching volleyball, started with our oldest daughter when she was in the fifth grade. At that time, we had to go through the South Milwaukee rec program. And since then, we've incorporated junior volleyball for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade girls, which didn't previously exist in Oak Creek. And I'm not, I don't want to repeat what's been said already. But with usages of the courts, what we sometimes have been finding, especially with more and more girls getting involved, is people are, girls are, their parents are hiring private coaches, and they're sometimes occupying the courts, you know, which limits our use of the court. Last summer, I bet you, we hit the courts at least 30 times. To make a reservation for a volleyball court, it's kind of hard. It's kind of weather dependent. If it's raining, you're not going to go. So planning ahead, it's kind of a spur of the moment. Get home from work, grab the kids, grab my son, call some other, you know, parents and kids. Courts are used. They're used a lot. I'd almost like to see multiple courts in some locations. To have tournaments, we can't do it here. I mean, you can't do it on one court. Just communities missing that. I think one court's another good step in that direction. I'd like to see more. That is all. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Scott. Next, Kelly. Name and address, please.
Kelly Patterson, 8252 South Parkview Court. I'm a neighbor of all the people back there. My yard butts up to the park. We use it constantly. I've lived there for 23 years. I really wish this would have happened many years ago, because my daughter started fifth grade and played through college volleyball, and we would have used it all the time. And I called a couple times to try to get something, because I know before we came in, they had an ice skating rink there and things like that. But when they did redo the basketball courts, that portion where you're thinking about putting the volleyball was all tore up already. So I had called and thought, well, why couldn't you just dig that dirt out and put the sand there? And it was already ready to go. But that didn't happen. So I'm really hoping for the younger kids now in the area and in the neighborhood that this does happen. And believe it or not, I think us as adults would use it. We think we can still play. But I'm just hoping that you guys really consider this, because I think it would be a positive thing for our community if that park's always used. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Tracy.
Hello, I'm Tracy Clevene. I live at 1044 West Glen Crossing Drive. My house abuts the park also. I think I support the volleyball courts. I think it's really important. I know there's other courts in the area that you're talking about saying that they're not as used or reservations aren't being made as much. However, like everybody has said too, most people aren't making reservations for those courts. I also think it's really important for kids in those neighborhoods to have accessibility where most of these kids that are starting out aren't driving. Buses aren't taking them to the parks. Parents aren't always available to drive them. This would be a safe, easy way for some of those kids in the neighboring community to get to on their bikes or walk, you know, especially without having to cross a highway or walk on a street where there's no sidewalks. So I think that would be important. And I really think it's important for families to be able to use it too. And me abutting the park, my kids are growing out, but I think they would come back and use it also. And I think we would too as adults, and I support it being in my community. And one other thing too, I know was important in something else that was talked about was the woodlands preservation and the trees. And I know where the trees you're talking about are. I think that that's something that could be overcome. I don't know, you know, what the plan of that be, you know, for that if that's included in the $28,000. But I think us as a community or a neighborhood could even work something out to help replace those trees too. So.
Thank you, Tracy. And Ann.
Hi, Ann Byer. I've been at 900 West Glen Crossing Court aisles for 12 years. I also bought up against the park. We obviously, we built our home on this park because of the community and what it brought. I met Dan sometime after we became a homeowner in Oak Creek. And one of the things that struck me was that you asked me to be part of the Parks Committee to speak on behalf of our community as we were were young, or parents with young children at the time. And as you can see from the many speakers that came together, our neighbors, this is something that is is for our community, not only just for our neighborhood, but I think Nikki highlighted, and some of the others, that this is a park that's utilized. The pickleball courts were were put in there. And people drive to this park for that. People drive to the park for the basketball. They drive to the park just to sit under the gazebo and have IC churches there and community camps there. People drive to the park all the time for the baseball diamond or just walk around the park. So not only is it just for our community, but I mean, it really is a park for all of Oak Creek. So I think you've heard everybody's interest tonight, and we just, we really appreciate the council's review and considering this for our community.
Before you go, Ann, she does serve on parks. Any insight as to parks? I know they recommend it. Was the discussion unanimous? How was it at the commission?
I believe that we did vote for this to come to the Common Council to be voted for something for our for our committee. I know you're also another resident utilizing our park. So hopefully, we'd see you and Carolyn out there as well.
You don't want to see me play volleyball anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Is there anybody else wishing to speak that may not have filled out a form that came in tonight? Okay, thank you all for your input. We're going to go to council wishing to speak.
Dan, can I mention something quick?
Oh, yeah.
You're going to scratch your head after I get done talking and be like, thanks a lot. That wasn't helpful at all. But I want to share with you, because I think it needs to be said, you know, the staff led with a few objections. And those those concerns or objections were brought forward to the Parks Commission. And ultimately, they considered those and forwarded the council a recommendation despite those concerns. And although we led with those today, I just want you to know from my perspective, of course, those are all very surmountable issues, right? It's not a huge dollar amount. We can replenish trees. We can be careful during the construction. So I don't want that to carry the day, because we're in this unique position where, you know, the staff didn't necessarily recommend this. It's not a staff driven agenda item. Ultimately, the Parks Commission thoughtfully took those issues into consideration and still advanced the recommendation. So, you know, it's a little awkward that, you know, the staff and the and the commission aren't necessarily on the same page. But this is not something, you know, obtuse or or and this is not an insane request here. So one of the things that, and maybe Dan, I'm stealing your thunder, one of the things you mentioned last meeting really made me think and pause. And that's, you know, hey, these parks do need to adapt with not only the adapting and changing needs of recreation preferences over many years, but also the turnover and you know, different generations of the neighborhoods and the folks and the preferences in the neighborhoods. That really rung something for me, Dan. And, you know, maybe that's exactly what we're seeing here. And, you know, council's aware, we can't get, you know, 20 people to show up for determining our comprehensive plan for 20 years. And we have, you know, eight or 10 sitting in the audience for a volleyball court. So just from my perspective, given the totality of this, you know, we would be very comfortable if the council ultimately decided to 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 agree with the Parks and Recreation Commission, you know, recommendation.
Thank you, Andrew. Going back, Rich?
Thanks, Andrew. You didn't help me out at all on that one. But that's okay. We agree to disagree. Couple of questions that Matt, I hope you're able to answer. And is there any way that we can get a good estimate of what the total cost for that area would be? I appreciated Director Travatowsky's information about the possibility of damage to to the paths. I guess I don't quite understand. I know one of the neighbors was very gracious in saying that they would be willing to offset the cost of some of the trees outstanding. In the report, though, it states that that might not be able to be done. Is that correct? And then, and I'm not quite done yet, Matt, I'm sorry. Repurposing, it's going to cost money to repurpose a park, if that's a consideration as well. So this thing is just going to be, I have a feeling, it'll be a lot more than $28,000. So in order for council to really objectively be able to decide, you know, whether this is in the community's best interest, we kind of know what it's going to cost. So any way of getting some?
I guess to speak for the path and the potential for damage. Now, that was something actually I was thinking of as I was reading through it myself prior to the meeting. There are ways I believe that we can work with our DPW since they will be doing the installation if so approved. We can work with ways to try to minimize that type of damage or find a an area, you know, not going down the path for most of it to where it might just be some small ruts that is easily repaired with some topsoil and some seed, which is very, very minimal cost. So I think, you know, in thought process, there are ways that we can work together as a staff to to definitely minimize the cost if if it did, you know, happen to damage some areas. In regards to the trees, we have a tree program through the city, which we are, you know, very well versed at. We plant trees all the time.
Okay, so that's not a big issue.
So I don't, you know, personally, no. Department wise, I don't think it is. We already have that kind of in tune. It would just be one or two trees, maybe three throughout the park. Didn't seem like we had to take all of them down. So I think some of the concerns were more generalized. We would just have to dig a little deeper to to make sure that we minimize those costs to our best ability.
Your very professional opinion or estimate. I mean, can this be done for 28 grand?
The volleyball court?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Second comment I have, I'm hearing a lot about courts being used and people, you know, constantly being on them. So I think that's a failure of the reservation system and not necessarily the need for one, two, three. two, three, or four more courts to, to meet the, the current demand. So has there ever been any, you know, conversation from the Parks Department about reviewing the, the reservation system? Because I think, I go back a lot of years, when, when we had, you know, when I was a youngster and we had permits to occupy a field, you showed the permit and you said, okay, you're done, we're on. So that's not happening now or?
Uh, Alderman, I, I think that part of it is, one, they are taking a look at the reservation policy.
Okay.
Overall. But it, as was mentioned previously, it is kind of weather dependent. So there are a lot of pop-up games and, you know, the parks are intended for everyone to use at their leisure and at their, you know, for recreation for their benefit. So to require everyone to constantly adhere to a reservation process, uh, procedure, I don't necessarily think that's entirely realistic all the time. I think for something larger where you're gonna be requesting something for, let's say you wanna have a, a couple of games or you know for sure that you are going to have a couple of people that are coming in for, you know, maybe two hours for an extended training or, or something like that. I think in those cases, it's probably something that if you're going to be scheduling it, even if it's a rain or shine kind of situation, that might be something that we would be encouraged. But to expect everybody to know, um, and to follow through with a reservation procedure for every single part of the park, other than, you know, our typical pavilions or something like that, I'm, I'm not sure that that's entirely realistic, but, you know, we could take a look at what our reservation policy is and try to encourage people to, if they're gonna be occupying it for, again, an extended period of time, encourage them to go through the reservation process for something like that.
Okay, and I, I appreciate that explanation because it's concerning when you just read the staff report and here it indicates nobody's using these courts. And I appreciate the input from, from the residents telling us know that it just entirely opposite is true, is that these are occupied all the time. So that's helpful in trying to consider a, a decision to make.
Alderman Dukniak, I, I might be able to explain a little bit further. I know through my practices in past history in regards to, you know, baseball and things along that lines, um, our, our parks and our facilities are first come, first served when it comes to fields. If you do reserve it and you, like you said in the past, you show that, right, they are required to leave. So if you deem it necessary to reserve that because you do want it, you can reserve it and it's a very easy policy to go through. So, um, it seems to be that people don't wanna reserve it and it's the first come, first served unless you do have that permit. So I mean, that's just, that's standard practice. It, it, it seems to be a policy that has worked. And I'm, I'm not quite sure how you would change that as a, as a commission or a parks and, and recommission in, in regards to trying to, you know, put a policy in place that could be truly enforced outside of that.
Again, my biggest concern is I have a report that tells me we've got eight other courts that aren't even being used and now we're considering spending an additional 28 plus.
I think what it states is that they're not being permitted.
Okay.
Whether they're being used, I, that would be, that, that's tough for us to decipher unless we're actually there, you know, looking at those parts.
And, and again, the residents, I appreciate, you know, you providing some, some clarity to the, the usage of those parks.
Ed.
Uh, Alderman Lorik, Second District. Um, I will try not to, um, um, I guess repeat all the rationale that the residents provided, um, but I do support this. Willow Heights is in the Second District. It's surrounded by, uh, the largest neighborhood in the Second District. Um, there's a lot of residents that are hoping to utilize this court. Just a couple of things I jotted down. Um, I don't feel that reservations is a good, uh, meter of how utilized the courts are. Um, I think as everybody said, there's a lot of pop-up games, families just walking into the park and starting to play, kids playing. Um, and, I mean, to that, I'd be curious how many reservations are on the basketball courts, just to see, um, relatively speaking, how, how close they are. Um, cause I would venture to say that the basketball courts, while used a lot, are not being reserved also. One thing I will point out, we, we had the recent community survey, uh, where residents throughout the community were, uh, were surveyed and asked opinion on things. And the third top thing that was mentioned, um, in things that they would like to see is improvement in amenities at parks and green spaces. I think this is a great opportunity to add an amenity to a park that doesn't have it already, um, to service that area of the city. Um, and then the last thing I'll bring up is, um, most recently, we had a discussion on the baseball fields in the community parks. Originally, it was talked about that the school district had fencing that we would be able to add. Um, and at the meeting, while it was passed unanimously by, by the council, um, there was mentioned that the fence might not be able to be used. There definitely will be more upkeep and maintenance. Um, and I, if I remember correctly, there was no cost estimate provided at that meeting on the baseball usage for league games. However, that did pass unanimously through the council. Um, so I would hope that volleyball with the increase in popularity would be treated on a similar playing field. So, thank you.
Steve. Alderman Krokowski, First District. I, there's, there's not a lot of disagreement I have with probably, um, with everybody that's made comments tonight. I just wanted to say that with regards to our, our parks, you know, we, we make, we wanna make improvements and there's always gonna be a cost involved in that. And I, while I appreciate the DPW director's, uh, description of the added costs, I mean, it, it's cost of doing business to add these nice amenities to the park. So, you know, we don't know if it's gonna be, if there's gonna be damage or, or to the pathways or if it's gonna be less than $28,000 or whatever the case may be, I'm willing to take that leap of faith and, uh, and, and put this, uh, sand volleyball court out there and let people enjoy it, whether it's reserved or not. So.
Um, Lisa, anything? Chris?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Um, very quickly, I do live in the Willow Heights neighborhood. I utilized that park a long time ago, my, when my daughter was younger, again, a volleyball player, had to play outside the city. We did not have a sand court available at the time, uh, so played outside the city and played all summer, much like these parents said. Andrew, that, that park did get reinvented a couple times over. Uh, when I moved in, there was a fitness circuit around there with some kind of medieval wooden equipment. You're supposed to do sit-ups on or something. Uh, and over the years, it's progressed, you know, the swing set wasn't what it is now and the whole thing. Uh, you know, it's not to exceed 28,000. Again, I just preached about our staff, our staff will find a way. Uh, we can probably work around the trees. Again, don't look at it as a particular sport. Um, you know, utilization is really hard and I think Greg brings up a good point. I drive by that park regularly, particularly with a little bit of construction on Drexel. Those basketball courts are full all the time, as well as pickleball courts and everything. And, and quite frankly, uh, these are parents that are in the park. I specifically asked a person like Ann Byer to get on parking racks, uh, because she had young children, had a different way of looking at parks than I did with an older, um, you know, a, a young teen child at the time that was just about done with high school. So I think it's important that, you know, we really respond to what the residents are gonna want, need. 10 years could be a whole different sport from now, who's to say? You know, somebody mentioned it was an ice rink there and it really jogged my memory. Yeah, there was one there. I, man, I, we probably still put it in our publications, but I don't think there's an ice rink there like ever. So, um, again, as, as things change, uh, we move it around and again, it's flavor of the council, but, uh, you know, we, we really wanna take care of everybody equally, whether it's pickleball or basketball, volleyball, baseball, uh, cricket. Uh, those things are popular and, and again, I don't think it's a good gauge with the reservation. It is a first come, first served basis, as Matt Carey said. It's been that way for a long time and it works and that's really keeps our parks open. Now, if you're in league play, that's understandable or you're having a family outing and you wanna fill the court all day, then maybe do it. But otherwise, um, I, I won't be voting on this as we have an odd number tonight, so we'll pass or fail. Um, but if I did have to, I would support this, so. Uh, with that being said, any further discussion? Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, would be a motion on nine.
Park moves to approve the construction of a sand volleyball court at the Willow Heights Park at a cost not to exceed $28,000.
Marshall, second.
Call.
Alderman Krokowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, very well. Congratulations, neighborhood. Item 10 is engineering and its consideration to award the Civic Center Clock Tower and Roof Flashing Rehabilitation to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, MM Schranz Roofing Inc., for a lump sum price of $313,800. Uh, Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor, Matthew Sullivan, City Engineer. Um, before you have a recommendation to consider a motion to award the, um, improvements here at, uh, the Civic Center in regards to the flashing and clock tower. Um, as you all are well aware, there has been some, uh, paint peeling, so to speak. Um, if you guys hide, you can see it. Um, this project was put together, um, through our maintenance group and RCL Engineering Group. We did advertise it and we came back with three bids. Um, the bids are slightly higher than what was, um, approved at the CIP Committee. Um, and a lot of this is based on just the market value and the way things are happening as we're moving forward in this crazy world that we live in right now. So we've seen an increase in costs, not only for manpower, but materials. Um, we've worked with finance, um, to come with, uh, an alternative option here for you as far as the funding. It would be under our CIP project, point two zero one six, and then through the general fund surplus in 2021. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Okay. All questions from that. Steve?
And, and Melissa might get involved in this. Wasn't there talk of some sort of litigation with the, uh, the original contractor for this issue? Melissa will handle this, I believe.
I'm happy to talk with you offline, Alderman Krokowski, about this. Just given the nature of the agenda item is just the award of this specific project for the work. So yes, in terms of, um, that piece, um, I think the only thing on the floor here is just what's on the agenda, but I'm happy to talk to you otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, um.
Yes, one, one other piece is the project is scheduled to be completed this fall, um, for our specification, so we're looking towards October, um, November.
Okay.
I ask a question about that. All right, so i- if awarded to this contractor, is that realistic for materials?
They haven't give us, they have not given us any inclination why it would not be.
Okay.
Um, and we did have a site, required site visit, um, in meeting prior to bid. So they are well aware of the work, of the situation and the site.
All right, thank you.
Greg?
Yes, that brings another question. Um, I don't know what all this all entails. I don't know types of cranes that would be unseen or anything like that. Um, but being that it's so close to the square and with Fall Festival and other things taking place, um, I don't know if there's ever a good time to do it, but if it can be coordinated to prevent any interference with any planned events that are already gonna be going on.
I'm, I'm sure we can, you know, work with our contractor in regards to the, the timing as far as weekends and that. Uh, most of the work will be done with scissor lifts or kind of boom lifts because of the facility, it's only two floors. Um, anything that's done on the clock tower are probably done through scaffolding.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, seeing no more conversation or discussion, I should say, uh, motion on 10.
Park moves to award the Civic Center Clock Tower and Roof Flashing Rehabilitation Project to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, MM Schranz Roofing Inc., for the lump sum bid price of $313,800.
Dukniak, second.
Call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Krokowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
And item 11 is consideration of a resolution granting We Energies a 12 by 59.1 foot permanent underground easement at Lake Vista Park. Matt?
Well, with 59 on that one.
That would not be exact enough, um, based on legal descriptions.
Oh, you engineer guys.
Um, before you, there's a, a resolution for adoption for We Energies, um, underground easement. So this is in coordination with the development of Lake Shore Commons. Um, this will tie into an existing transform and allow a looping process for We Energies to install their primary lines that will feed all of the homes and multifamily buildings throughout the development.
Questions from Matt regarding the easement, obviously a necessary piece of infrastructure. Okay, uh, seeing no further discussion, motion on 11.
Marshall moves to adopt resolution 12334 dash zero six zero seven two two, a resolution granting a We Energies 12-foot by 59.1-foot permanent underground electric easement at Lake Park Vista.
This is cultural second. Call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
And item 12 and 13 fall under the license committee. I will turn that over to Alderman Krokowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two items tonight, uh, item 12, uh, deals with the renewal of alcoholic beverage licenses, um, for the following year, uh, 2022 to 2023. Um, rather extensive list, is that everybody had an opportunity to look over the list of businesses and, uh, does anybody have any questions, cares or concerns with, uh, item 12?
All right. Seeing none, Krokowski make a motion to grant the 2022, 2023 renewal business alcohol license request as listed on the June 7th, 2022 License Committee Report with issuance and release subject to final inspection approvals listed and payment of any fees or obligations.
Dukniak, second.
Call.
Older person, Marshall?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Krokowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
And item 13 is, uh, various license requests, uh, that we normally get every, uh, every meeting. Has anybody, uh, has everybody had a chance to review the items on item 13 for the common council report? And does anybody have any questions, cares or concerns? All right, seeing none, Krokowski make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the June 7th, 2022 License Committee Report.
Dukniak, second.
Call.
Alderman Guzakowski?
Aye.
Krokowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
And item 14 is our vendor summary report, uh, as of June 1st, 2022, in the amount of $624,412.25. You all take a look and you can direct your questions to the appropriate person you think can answer that. How's that? When you are satisfied, uh, there's no questions or discussion, motion please.
Krokowski make a motion to approve the June 1st, 2022 Vendor Summary Report in the amount of $624,412.25.
Marshall will second.
Call.
Alderman Krokowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Okay, uh, before we adjourn, a couple of quick announcements. Uh, June 11th, the farmer's market will be celebrating its five-year anniversary. Um, so they have a lot planned there, they have celebration cake, uh, they're gonna recognize a lot of the sponsors there, so if you could, please turn out, support the locals there, um, as the vegetables are beginning to come in and it's been very successful first four weeks with it being extended. Uh, secondly, June 14th, the square is gonna see a Flag Day celebration. So if you're free that morning at 10:00 AM, uh, please come to the square. Uh, Oak Creek is gonna have a Flag Day celebration and in conjunction with the library, uh, we're gonna have a Flag Day event that will carry on throughout the summer, educational event, um, on the US Flag. So, um, looking forward to it.
Can I have one more?
Sure.
Um, I had the opportunity to visit DPW today and the signs for that are spectacular.
Spectacular, to say the least. So, um, you know, a lot of credit goes out to Leslie, helped design those banners, uh, as well as Eider Flag, who was so generous in creating those banners for us, uh, as Nah, it's gonna be ten AM. It's been slated for ten AM, so hopefully some of the schools turn out and uh, you know, the square's gonna be a little more livelier, uh, as people are walking around, learning about the flag. So again, special thanks go out to all the people that really helped with this from Matt, from DPW, Leslie, of course. Uh, Laura was involved. Catherine, were you in on this too?
I was too.
Jill, oh, Jill Lininger was essential. Uh, just a lot of people that really, it took a lot of work and time to get this. Believe it or not, it all started with a letter from a little boy in two thousand seventeen. So, um, we work slow, but we do get some things done. So anyways, with that, um, we can move for adjournment.
Marshall will move to adjourn.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody. Thank you.